Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everyone for coming to tonight's, June the 2nd, 2014 Bryant City Council meeting. So, first thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes of May the 19th. Gentlemen, you've been given those minutes, so if you have any addition corrections, please bring them forward.
I move we accept as read, or as given to us.
I'll second it.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I move we adopt. Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number four, we have an employee status change from the fire department, and Chief Siders is coming forward.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
The council has been presented with four individuals, a change to their pay classifications, Cody Carlisle, Jared McCann, Ryan Hake, and Brett Miller. These four individuals have completed their hazardous materials technician training recently, and in accordance with the volunteer pay ordinance, they're entitled to a change in their pay scale. However council would like to do it, if you want to do it individually, or if you want to do all four simultaneously, I'll leave that up to you.
I'd say just do all four.
I'm making a motion to do all four.
I agree.
I'll second it.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay. Next one is number five, and that is employee status change in the clerk's office. So Lori, you want to take care of that?
Sure. In December you guys allowed Lisa Rolfe in my office to become classified as an account clerk three, which put her on a six-month probationary status. I'm asking that she be reclassified to regular employment and status.
So move. Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next one is number five, and that is employee status change in the clerk's office. So Lori, you want to take care of that?
Sure. In December you guys allowed Lisa Rolfe in my office to become classified as an account clerk three, which put her on a six-month probationary status. I'm asking that she be reclassified to regular employment and status.
So move. Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. All righty. Number six is employee status change in the police department, and Chief Arnold.
Good evening.
Evening.
Steve Doctor, he is going to be ending his probationary period, and I request that he be moved to regular full-time status with the Bryant Police Department, effective June 3rd.
What shift is he on? Work?
He works thirds.
Does he? Okay. All righty, gentlemen.
I move we adopt this.
I'll second it.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have another employee status change in the street department. Mayor, you want to take care of that?
Yes, this is for Greg Greiser, who is a recycling vehicle operator. He was able to get his CDL, and I request that he be given that amount of dollars for getting his CDL license, as others did in that department. He's been working that for some time.
Okay.
Move that we accept. Second?
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay. Number eight is approval of hiring of lifeguards, and Assistant Park Director Bruce Wheeler.
Good evening.
Bruce?
Since last time we met, the original assistant manager for East End Pool has taken another job in our field of education, so we have to do some shuffling. We'd like to move Linda McDonough from head lifeguard to assistant manager at East End, and move Annie Kerr from lifeguard to the head guard at Moore Pool, and also like to add Jordan Wise as a substitute lifeguard.
And Linda is going to the East End, correct?
Yeah.
And then, but then, does Tom oversee both operations?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, he does.
Gotcha.
I'll make a motion we approve that. Second?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Number nine is an ordinance, and Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 21, 2014. An ordinance to enter into a county-wide agreement with the Williams County Commissioners and Everbridge, mass notification for emergency management notification and declaring an emergency.
We have three people here tonight. Dawn, are you going to take that, Dawn Baldwin?
I'll start.
And Dawn Bullock, and Rick Beals. My son, get up here and get her started. Tell us all came about, where we're at.
I'll let you do that.
All right. This came about because in West Unity we had a storm siren that quit work, and then on investigating that, found out that the siren was from the 1950s, kind of that technology that still exists. And the siren was irreparable, so I set about, as village administrator, trying to purchase a new storm siren, and I got a little sticker shock. It was $21,000. And so then, we started working on trying to find some grant money. And in the course of doing that, we ran across the mass notification, and started talking with one vendor, and then it was going to cost the village of West Unity about $3,700 a year to get into this mass notification if we went by ourselves. So I asked the person I was talking with, you know, what about if we split it up? I thought of the three townships around us, Brady, Mill Creek, and Jefferson, and so, yeah, that drove the cost per capita down. And so I went and talked to Mill Creek and Brady, and they were ready to jump in, and then I guess word kind of got out, and Dawn got a hold of it, and she contacted me and said, well, what if all the entities in the county went together? So it just progressed from there. And at this point, for us, where we're at cost-wise now, if everybody comes in, we're down to a little over $500 a year, which we could go for, you know, a long period, do the math, 42, about 42 years, at the cost of what it would cost us to purchase a siren. So for us, it's kind of a no-brainer as we go forward. And this, I'll just give it to Dawn now, because this is where she kind of picked up. And one of the things I just, I'd like to thank Dawn, because, you know, she really jumped on board and started working with me and all the entities. This is kind of a unique situation. We've got 20 entities in Williams County that have all started to come together to work for a common goal, and I think that's a really cool thing. That's a really, really neat thing that we're all able to work together.
Plus the commissioners.
Plus the commissioners, yes. And they're investing in it, so.
Rick, what was your statement when you first looked into it? Was it $27,000 or $3,700 it was going to cost you?
Oh, $3,700 for the village of West Unity if we went alone.
I don't know how much Dawn's going to get into this, but I just looked at Mill Creek, West Unity, and Brady, and you add those three together, and it came out to $1,100.
Right.
So just by the whole county going in, instead of costing you individually, the village of West Unity, 37, you're, you know, you can get all three of those townships in you for 1,100 bucks.
Yeah, and what we figured out, I think originally, was like 44 cents per citizen is one of the, one of the cost breakdowns we had, and we've driven that down by bringing everybody into like 33 cents if I'm correct.
Yeah.
So it makes it a lot more economically feasible for a city the size of Bryant as well, so. But I'll give it up to Dawn here.
You gentlemen might remember about four years ago, the city of Bryant actually was the leader in trying to bring a mass notification system to the county, and at that time, the city invited the county to partner with them, and while we all agreed that it was a good idea, financially, it just didn't work out at that time. And then a year ago, the county wanted to reinvestigate it, and invited some others to partner, but again, it, financially, we just didn't have a cheerleader to make it all happen. Through the unfortunate circumstance with the West Unity siren, they chose to start this project again, and the time was just right. I think partly it was because it was led by a village, maybe not the county, that we have the townships on board, we have the other villages, the city of Bryant, as well as the county making a 20% contribution. Originally, they had looked at one vendor, and we, through some investigative, talking to other entities that had that vendor, there were some concerns or red flags, probably primarily from Hillsdale County. We had an opportunity to meet with the EMA folks from Hillsdale County, who has the first vendor that we looked at. It is not as flexible, it doesn't have as many user-friendly features with it, so then we started talking to some other entities that had mass notification, and they use Everbridge. They're very happy with Everbridge, and we then invited that vendor to come down and do a presentation, and everybody agreed that Everbridge seemed to have the flexibility and the accommodations that was going to work for everybody. It would be both an emergency and a non-emergency notification piece, so not only would there be emergency notifications that come directly from, say, the National Weather Service when tornado or severe thunderstorm warnings are issued. Additionally, whether it's police, fire, EMS, the city at large, boil alerts, evacuation, shelter in place, any kind of emergency that we might have, those notifications could be pushed out. Then additionally, each of the entities, each of the jurisdictions that help financially support the program, they will have an administrator, and then below that administrator, you can have sub-administrators. So the police department would have access to the system, and if they want to send out non-emergency messages to their personnel or to others, they could. Likewise, the fire department could be a subgroup, street department, utilities, parks and rec. It's as configurable as we want it to be. Our imagination is the only limit in using it. Financially, we found that it's a very cost-effective way to get those notifications out. At this point, we have either a written or verbal agreement from everyone except the city of Bryant, who's meeting tonight, and some of you have been at the prior meetings and have seemingly been in support of it, and the village of Edgerton, who also is having their council meeting tonight. So we have commitment, buy-in, support from just about everybody in the county at this time.
Now, we understand that if you have a landline, and you get a tornado warning, everybody, you don't have to sign up for your landline, that's correct?
That's right.
That phone will ring.
That's right.
In addition, if you want your iPad, or your iPhone, or whatever, you've got to, you've got to have a sign.
That's right. As with most mass notification systems, landlines can automatically be imported into the system. So everybody that has a landline, when those emergency notifications are sent out, they're automatically going to be reached. For folks that want it on their iPhones, their pagers, their emails, text messaging, then there will be an opt-in portal, and that's something that we're going to be talking about a little later this week, in terms of meeting with Everbridge, deciding how we can set up a domain, that's not going to be a county domain, it's going to be a countywide Everbridge domain, so that everybody will go to that same portal, that same opt-in. And then again, if I want it on my landline, and my cellphone, and a text message, and my email, I can sign up for all those notifications. If we have somebody that just wants it on their cellphone, then they're just going to opt in with their cellphone. If I want emergency notifications on everything, but I want non-emergency notifications, just on an email, again, the individual can pick and choose how and what notifications they want.
And if you have your phone to understand, if you're in Florida, and somebody's here, your phone's going to ring in Florida and tell you that, but also
That's correct.
the people here, you have to have them registered too.
Well, I have two questions. Will we still use the sound alarms?
Absolutely.
Okay. And corporate structures, where they have switchboards and stuff, will they be set up in a different, and I'm thinking there because of mass amounts of people, industry that have 350 employees, that sort of thing?
Or the hospital.
The hospital.
It will, well, in terms of the landline, it will go to any of those phone numbers that are registered in the 911 database. So if you have a landline phone that is separate from, some of that, again, it's going to depend on how the PBX is set up, and I'm not telephone technician, so I don't necessarily get it.
I think the hospital has one line in, and I think the medical center has.
I would hope or encourage that they have some sort of emergency line going in, in case somebody's away from a phone or something. I mean, I can imagine that could happen.
I think I'm, a question with Dick as well, you take like, at 8:00 tonight, it's Spangler Candy Company, or Titan Tire, or Plastic, or anything like that, you know, how does, yeah, how would they be notified?
Well, part of it's going to be, again, this is not the end-all. You know, the same ways that they're notified now. Some of the factories in the county have notification boxes, so that when the siren is set off, that also sets off a notification in those factories.
Gotcha.
Other people have the all-hazards NOAA weather radios in their factories. So again, when the National Weather Service sets off that tornado warning, or that severe thunderstorm warning, the NOAA all-hazard weather radio in that factory is activated. We don't see this as replacing anything.
Right.
We see this as an additional supplemental means to notify. One of the nice advantages, or one of the reasons that we're really promoting it, is the outdoor sirens are simply that, they're outdoor sirens. And if you're inside, or you're sleeping, or it's the middle of the night, there's a lot of folks in the county, especially out in rural areas, they're not close enough to ever hear a siren. So with this, sirens are still going to sound in the villages, in the county, wherever they are, but at the same time that those sirens are going off, the National Weather Service is going to be activating that alert that's going to go out through this. So you will be getting that notice, notification either on your landline, your cellphone, or whatever means you've signed up for.
I have a question for, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Dawn Bullock. Remember a year or so ago, we toured the facility, and we talked about where we had the old alarm system, and national weather alert, and there's some sort of inconsistency because there may be a weather situation, it may come down around the north part of Bryant, but may not be in the southern part of Bryant. Will this make it more consistent, and more, or will it be still all about the same? You remember that, that screening we did?
I think it's going to be about the same as what you have today, because it's driven by the, the weather portion, it will be driven by the National Weather Service, and however they draw their polygon, and the area that it's included, that's what's going to activate.
That's how it was explained at the meeting, that you could still do that polygon, and the tornado could be up in, say, your part and not down here, and our sirens would, phones would not ring. And wasn't this about, Dawn, wasn't this about a five-minute notification, or something like that?
They said depending on the, the device that you have, again, they obviously have no control over that, but 30 seconds to two minutes, they can send out a notification to about 10,000 people, which they, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I was thinking in regards that probably, they're giving you the notification, at least the storm or tornado, whatever is maybe five to 10 minutes out, right?
Well, that, it's really going to depend on how that storm develops, because sometimes we have storms that develop right over us.
Right.
Obviously, there's not going to be, so that's all in the hands of the meteorologists, and it all depends on weather and how quickly it develops.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the one concern that we probably will want to revisit or talk about is, as Dawn was talking about the polygons, now, when the National Weather Service issues a severe storm warning of, of any kind, it's based on a polygon. They look at the weather conditions, and they look at a geographical area that's probably going to be impacted. Part of that polygon could impact, say, the northern portion of the city of Bryant. When the National Weather Service sends out its teletype, it looks at the polygon, and it pretty much picks the communities that are more in the center of that polygon, and in their text that the National Weather Service sends out, it says, a tornado warning has been issued for Williams County, the communities that may be affected are, and it will list those communities. We do know that there was a time in 2011 where a portion of, down to Edgerton Street in Bryant, was within that polygon, but because Edgerton was not mentioned as one of those possibly affected communities, the Bryant sirens weren't sounded. So with this system, there is the possibility, the way the current protocol's written, that some people could be getting a telephone call, because they're included in the polygon, but because Bryant isn't or wasn't mentioned in the teletype, the sirens wouldn't be sounded. And that's something that would probably need or want to work. In this particular incident, locations in the path of this severe storm include Striker, West Unity, Archbold, Fayette, Waseon Delta, and Swanton, but the actual polygon goes all the way down to Edgerton Street in Bryant. So those folks that were sitting at John's Donut that day, were really in the, the warning area. So folks that would have an address or a landline within that geographical polygon, within that geographical area, their cellphones, pagers, whatever's going to be going off. And I just wanted to make everybody aware of that little bit of an inconsistency that we'll probably want to work through if or as we move forward with the notification system.
Well, then, the concern I have, and Chief Siders, and Chief Arnold, and Mayor, Council, you know, we, we tried this program before. Of course, we had a situation where the inconsistencies caused some grumblings amongst some industry and, and people, and my concern's always been health, safety, and welfare of the community, and I know sometimes there's a cost to that, but there's also a cost of life if, if something occurs, especially like we saw in Edgerton, Ohio, where a gust comes upon and destroys a building. There wasn't too many years ago, we would have had people in that building. So the, the thought that I have is, I like the premise of the program, I'm, I'm really okay with that, but I think we're going to have to do some educating. People need to be aware of these inconsistencies, especially these industry, and, and the hospital, and those people that look at their concerns from a cost and emotional standpoint.
I've tried and tested this, this system.
It is in eight other Ohio counties. Some of you may have noticed that one of the, I don't remember what night it was last week, Thursday night maybe? Fox out of Toledo, one of their stories was that the city of Findlay just went from the first vendor that we looked at to the vendor that we are now looking at, that they made that. The city of Boston uses Everbridge, and during the Boston bombing, all the notifications that they were sending out for that event, on Sandy, Hurricane Sandy, it was used, the whole state of North Dakota and the whole state of Connecticut are on Everbridge, and Huron County and Muskegon County in Ohio are the two, two of the counties where I know the EMA director maybe better than some of the other counties. And in talking to them, they said they love it when we ask for it with a weakness, they said there's really not one. Some of them had had other vendors, and they, they're just pleased with it.
I guess, I didn't make the last meeting, but the one meeting I went to, it was Red Alert, was it?
Code Red.
Code Red. And so evidently, you definitely found something a little bit better, different than what, because I actually was impressed with that presentation that I was at.
Some of the advantage of, of Everbridge, the one that we're looking at, number one, it's unlimited minutes. With the first vendor, it was a set amount of minutes, and if you went over that minute, obviously, kind of like a cellphone plan, you were going to be charged for it. With this, there's no, no amount of minutes. Also with this, it's true text messaging. For those that get their messages by text, you may be familiar that you can either get a true text message, or there's another protocol where a message can be translated to your cellphone number by way of your carrier's email account, and sometimes those are interpreted as spam, and that was something that we saw when we met with Hillsdale. They showed us, they sent out a test message, and depending on the length of the message, number one, when you get that translation to your email carrier, there's a limit to the number of characters that can be in that. Additionally, depending on your kind of cellphone and your carrier, it was not giving the complete text message. We had two people that day that were sent the message, and the one, she, she got only part of the announcement. The, and it was a, a test message that was non-emergency, but the firefighters picnic on Saturday, and then it was dot, 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 and that's all she got, where because it was that translation to, it wasn't a true text message, it didn't go through.
Plus, they said that with the, the first company, they, they owned the stuff, and if you drop out, this is a year-by-year cost, and this, this cost is not going to change. And if you want to drop out after the year, you can get this information back with this company we're going with.
Right.
The other one, they, they kept at it.
With the first vendor, everybody that would opt in, if for whatever reason, two or three years down the road, we would choose to no longer go with that vendor because something newer, better has been developed, that first vendor was going to keep all of the information that had been imported into the system. With Everbridge, if for whatever reason, we choose to cancel our contract with them, or no longer renew our contract with them, they'll give us that information, so that if we would go with another vendor, we don't lose all of the opt-ins that we've had, we can just import current information into the new system.
And by this, this amount of money that we have to pay, it figures out 33 cents per year, it's based on population, it's 33 cents.
And this is more economical than what the first one was too. Again, you know, not that everything is driven by money, but it looks like we're getting a much more adjustable notification system that's going to be able to be used. With the first, with the first vendor, we could only have five administrators, and we knew that to have a countywide system, only five administrators, that wouldn't work. I mean, we need to have anybody that opts in, any jurisdiction that opts in and is a partner in it, then they have control over their portion of it, and they can send out those messages. And with the first vendor, that was not a possibility, which was a huge reason that we saw that they probably, it was not going to be a good fit for Williams County.
I'm, I'm looking at this, the, the cost here, and, and there's population numbers here, okay? So, for example, if, if these numbers change, we're looking at right now of basically a $12,000 investment, just a pinch over $12,000 investment. If these numbers change, whether it's somebody that has 1,335 people, if it goes down to that particular town or village goes to 1,200, and then these all change, instead of having a total of 37,000, if that goes down to 32,000, does this 12,200 still stay the same, and just that now it's, instead of 37, we're at 35, and now the average of, is now more, rather than 33, it's now 55, or whatever?
Census, wasn't it, based on the census?
It was based on the census.
Right.
And I, my guess is, again, I'm not driving this bus, I'm just representing some folks tonight, but my guess is that it's still going to have to be distributed by everybody, so that if the population of Williams County would be decreased by 5,000, it's going to have to be adjusted, so that again, proportionally, it's
But isn't this based
And I, my guess is, again, I'm not driving this bus, I'm just representing some folks tonight. But my guess is that it's still going to have to be distributed by everybody so that if the population of Williams County would be decreased by 5,000, it's going to have to be adjusted so that, again, proportionally, it's
But isn't this based up on people signing up, though?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
No, this is based on the population, period.
Okay, so, okay, that was my point.
Yes, no.
We're showing 8,500 here in Bryan, but only if 7,000 people sign up, then we're still locked into that 8,500.
Yes, yes.
Because of the census. Okay, that's, okay.
The other thing that came up at the meeting, the school, schools got all interrupted. And they're on, they're on something right now.
So they're involved in this?
No, not yet. But some of them are, have signed contracts. Some of them wasn't so satisfied. And they're looking if the schools would have them to come on and pay some, this, the amount could go down a little bit.
The schools were invited. There was communication with all of the superintendents. Diana Savage took on the responsibility of heading up that communication piece and talking. And the message that came back to us was that unfortunately, all of the schools currently had already committed to something for the next school year. At least one school system is in a contract until 2017. But all of them agreed that this is more economical. They thought it was just as user-friendly. And as their contracts are getting ready to expire, they're going to revisit it with who's ever helping administrate it to see about coming on board at that time.
So these will be like a June-to-June contract?
It will be from the time that we sign the contract, yes.
Twelve months after?
Yes.
If it doesn't work for the year and we didn't like it, we could pull out.
I guess, you know, you talk about the schools. That's one of the things that I move very cautiously in this because the system that is currently in place and most of the schools are using this past year was an absolute fail. There were so many times that the information, they either couldn't get it into the system. Once it was into the system, it sat there for half hour, 45 minutes before it was broadcast out to the, to the students and to the homes. And that's why I'm, I, when, when we talk about this, we've been burnt by similar types of systems. And I would hate for people to rely on this as their main source of notification and then have something happen that it doesn't work when we need it to work.
And with that, that was my concern. My, my wife being a teacher, receiving some of those messages, that was my concern on the corporate level that I had before. Because it sounds ridiculous, but it's not. It's a, it's a major problem. If you're sitting there waiting for a phone call, it doesn't happen.
Yeah. And I don't disagree.
But you still have all the systems in place that are in place now?
That's
And this is an addition.
That's correct. We're not doing this to replace anything. And that's going to have to be part of the, number one, the information, the database is only going to be as good as we advertise it, promote it, and get folks to opt in. We are still going to be setting off sirens. The city of Bryan's still going to be setting off sirens. Every talk that Don and I do, we promote the NOAA All-Hazard Weather Radios. No, technology is not fail-safe, no matter what, whether you're talking about your cable TV, talking about your cell phones, talking about your batteries or your electrical, you know. So folks, number one, folks have to take responsibility for themselves. We can only give them as many opportunities to be warned as possible. Again, even if we send out the notifications, we can't make them take shelter. But it's our proposal that we do everything we can to get that notification out to as many people as we can. And this is just one more tool that comes to the whole county very economically.
Where can people buy those radios, those NOAA radios that you talked about?
Everywhere, from Walgreens to Walmart to Ace Hardware to online Kroger grocery stores, Radio Shack.
That's one of the concerns, education.
And if you get one, we'll, if we get it, Don will program it for you. Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, any other discussions on this?
I was wondering if Bruce Siders had anything to add or comment on it at all?
Bruce, what was our cost three years ago when we did a little loan? Was it 7,500?
Just for the city alone?
Yeah.
If the city went out and the loan was like 7,500?
7,500 for the year.
If we went alone. But if we went with the county, it was going to be somewhere around, I want to say somewhere around $20,000 at that time.
Yeah. So it's come down. And with technology, the way it's going, I think it's, this'll, this'll be short-lived and something else is going to come.
Well, I guess I'm going to ask for a vote on this ordinance.
And you're asking to go as an emergency measure and suspend it?
I think we ought to, so they can get going.
Then I'll move suspend.
I'll second.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I move we adopt.
I'll second.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It was a great presentation. Thank you.
Do you have an idea once this is signed, when this will, you know?
I know we got an email from the Commissioner's Office saying they had communicated with the county prosecutor, the county prosecutor, that we're going to write up a simple resolution template so that each of the political jurisdictions that needed or wanted would have that resolution template to the inter-independence agreement, which is waiting on pretty much editing at this point. Everybody was given a deadline of this coming Friday, June 6th, as I said, we spurred back for most of them, other than a couple that have council meetings this week. And as soon as we had that confirmed amendment, then we're just going to move forward with the commissioners to make it happen.
And you're just into the last page?
Yep, just the last page. Anybody's thinking for you.
And for that point, once we enter into agreement, they hold up approximately 30 days until we have enough.
Gotcha. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Let's go to number 10 on the agenda. And that, Lori, is an ordinance. So would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 22, 2014. An ordinance authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to issue change order number one for the project known as WIL-SR2/SR34-5.97/15.75, resurfacing PID 93954.
Mr. Brian Whelan, engineer.
This is where I ask you to read that again.
I don't think so.
Typically, when I, we have capital projects, I give you one change order at the end of the project. We usually float it from month to month and do it at the end. Well, with the ODOT project, we have to submit invoices monthly to ODOT repayment. So you're going to see quite a few change orders from me. Just so you know, you're going to see quite a few more ups and downs. And again, if it's a decrease, you might have a $20,000 deduct next month. Not saying that'll happen, but just food for thought. You're going to see quite a few from me here. We'll have one the end of June and one the end of July and the one probably in August to sort everything out. This one, for instance, change order number one, we inspected all the catch basins and we found that there were 12 additional basins that were bad and in need of repair from what the design had shown from three years ago. So we went ahead and instructed the contractor to replace those basins. So at this point in time, I'll ask you to suspend the rules and approve this. Now, with this particular project, this is an 80/20. There is additional funds available, so ODOT should cover 80% of this cost. Not guaranteeing, but I'm saying should cover.
Are we okay in our budgeting? Do we have kind of a contingency line in there?
You're going to see some items come up here where we're going to ask for an appropriation in advance to cover that. But we should be okay as of now.
And then I thought of that, is we go through all these additional changes, pluses and minuses.
Right.
That we don't lose track of
No, right. Originally, we, we had planned on this project being $1.8 million. So we were expecting worse. It came in at 1.15. So I think we've got a little money that we can play with here as needed, but we have to appropriate it every time we go through it.
Well, I was on council one time where we had a situation uptown where we had to a $20,000 additional
Right.
project that wasn't there. And I just want to make sure we're okay.
Is this North Main?
This is, no, this is High Street.
This is High Street?
This is High Street, East and West High Street. And this is less than 1% of the total project cost right now.
I'm all right, as long as you just are following it.
When you talk about additional money to play with, change the word play to work.
Work, there you go. Additional, additional funds to potentially utilize. Is that better?
Some of us just have fears that it might be wrong.
I'll make a motion to suspend, gentlemen.
Second?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Number 11 also is an ordinance. So Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 23, 2014. An ordinance authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to issue change order number one for the project known as WIL-US127-2.01 PID 8333A, LPA Agreement Number 25656.
This is the South Main Widening Project. Basically, it's a fairly substantial increase. But the, the main point is the asphalt concrete intermediate course. What the contractor was instructed to do per the plans and specifications was mill the surface. Any additional areas that were bad, they had to mill some more and repair. So this is about 15% of the asphalt intermediate course, 15% additional areas that, again, I'll say my x-ray vision didn't work. I didn't know what the subgrade was like underneath there. But the engineer didn't have a huge quantity of contingent funds put in or contingent, contingent line item, I guess, for this in their bid. So what was used is what was used, and it is what it is. Unfortunately-
Again, I go back to my question, are we okay financially?
Well, unfortunately, this project, we have no additional funds to work with from ODOT. We are capped out at $376,000 refund, period. So 100% of this change order is going to come out of our pockets. So
So we're going to be okay with it?
So far, we are. Lori has said we have money to appropriate and take care of this. So
We'll deduct the amount of transfer that we would allow into the capital funds, 401 fund, and put it into this project and stuff.
Okay. All right. I'm okay with that.
Typically, our capital projects come out of the 401 fund, and I've got a pretty good cushion built in there. We've set up our own line item for this particular. It's not the 401. It's, I don't even have it here.
406 and 408.
I got it. I got a good idea.
So there's no contingency built into that. It was what the original bid was. So there's money available, just not in this particular line, this particular fund. So with that, I would request you suspend and approve this.
So move. Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move the ban.
Second?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Number 12, an ordinance, Lori, please number and read.
Ordinance number 24, 2014. An ordinance authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to issue change order number two for the project known as WIL-SR2/SR34-5.97/15.75, resurfacing PID 93954.
High Street project, back on High Street again. Some of the catch basins, there is an I-beam under the curb that supports the back of the casting. 80% of them on the backside were rotten. You couldn't see that from an inspection process from the front. They looked good. But if you actually got in and was a contortionist and be able to see on the backside, they were shot. And the plans did not have anything in there to replace these I-beams. So what we did is we deleted $25 worth of block and added, for the first one, $185 worth of a pre-cast top. Basically, it was an additional eight-inch concrete with an I-beam built in. So we basically deleted some items and added some items. So this is to adjust the quantity, to have new pre-cast tops with an I-beam in to support the, the frame and grate system that's there.
So the cost probably wasn't so bad when you consider the type of stuff you need to change, right?
Right.
Okay, I move we suspend that.
Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move we adopt.
Second?
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll give you an update on the projects when we go around the room. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Now we, on number 13, sorry, on the agenda, is a resolution to accept the donation. So Lori, would you please number and read? Number and read.
Resolution number 19, 2014. A resolution to accept a $12,800 donation from the George Isaac Foundation for a wrought iron archway for Fountain Grove Cemetery.
Mayor?
If you look at the last page that I just sent down to you dated Friday, January 25th, 2008, that was in times past, and it showed a archway into the cemetery, and it had a date on it and so forth. And I was, met with George Isaac several different times, and he wanted to have something out there into the cemetery where you can identify that. So we talked many times, and we got the prices and so forth, and found out where they, where they make them, and got one of the other family members involved. And they tried to get a price and whatever. And the bottom line is, the Isaac Foundation now is donating $12,800 for this archway. And what, what you're getting is the arch itself with the date on it. It's not, you know, it's going to be the bronze like you see in one of the other pictures in there from the company down in Columbus, Good Dale Park. And then these posts on each side then will be set in cement. And we have a cost of $2,700 that we will pick up to mount this once we get, once we get it shipped here. So the whole, the whole engraving and the posts and everything comes to, and the shipping to get it here is $12,800. And then we have set up to, to lay the brick on each side and set that in. And it'll be on the same type of stone that our mausoleum is constructed of, or similar to that.
That's what the base would be?
Yes, yes. And it'll be set in on that area. It'll be high enough so that fire engines and things like that can get under, through it along that line. So it'll be a nice addition to our, our cemetery out there. So we're adding money to the account, not taking it away tonight.
Move we suspend the rules.
I'll second, Greg.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
In honor, do I make a motion to accept the resolution? But with that motion, I want to thank the Isaacs for the donation.
I'll second.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yeah.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Number 14 is a resolution. So Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 20, 2014. A resolution providing for an inter-fund cash advance. This is an inter-fund advance requested of $12,664 from the 401 Capital Improvement Fund to the 408 High Street paving project, as previously mentioned by City Engineer Whelan.
I'm making a motion to suspend.
Second?
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. The next page. All right. Number 15 is also an ordinance. So Lori, please number and read.
Ordinance number 25, 2014. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending June 30th, 2014. This is a transfer request of $3,166 from the Half Percent Income Tax Fund to the 408 High Street Paving Project. This will be the 20% that we'll be responsible for on that project for the change orders. In addition, it's a transfer request from the Half Percent Income Tax Fund to the 406 South Main Street Project of $23,597.30, as previously mentioned. Total amount of transfers requested, $26,763.30.
Move we suspend.
Second?
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move we adopt.
Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yeah.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. Number fifteen is also an ordinance. So Lori, number and read.
Ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand fourteen. An ordinance providing green appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, two thousand fourteen, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request of $12,800 to the general fund for the cemetery arch site that you just received the donation for. An appropriation request of $92,740, this will be for the 2015 appropriation grant fund, as previously mentioned. An appropriation request for $23,597 and 30 cents for the South Main Street ODOT project fund, as well as an appropriation requested of $15,830 for the High Street paving project fund. Total amount of appropriations requested, $144,967 and 30 cents.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yeah.
Tommy?
This is seventeen?
Where do you want to put that?
You can put it in right now.
Yeah, put it in right now. It's on the table. So this is what was on the agenda.
Okay. All right. We have another ordinance, and Lori, would you please read and number?
Ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand fourteen. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Office Partners LLC for the project known as Eight Computer Workstations for the Bryan Municipal Court.
That was something that wasn't on the agenda, and they took bids for that, and that's how local, workstations are bought locally, and it comes out of the court fund, and they asked that we get that.
I don't know if you need any clarification on that. Our office bid it for them.
Yes.
They provided us with specifications for the project. We bid the project. We're awarding the base bid, plus we're receiving trade-in of $600 per unit for 10 units as well, accepting a bid alternate. So again, it's all through their budget. Just as a formality, we helped them out with the bid process because it was more than the 25, or more than the $50,000 bid threshold. They also have to pay prevailing wages on any work that's done down there because it's in excess of the 70-some thousand dollar threshold as well for prevailing wages. So for installation of those units, they're going to pay the state prevailing wages as well. So with that, the mayor and I would request that you suspend and approve that as well.
John?
I move we suspend.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yeah.
Tommy?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number eighteen is to agree or come up with a special council meeting at 2:00 on June 10th at the wastewater treatment plant to review the plans for the next five to 10 years of the wastewater plant.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, who's first?
Dick Reed.
Okay. Dick Reed?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Now, for that meeting, we will notify you by mail that we'll have that as a reminder. But this is the book that was given out here about a month ago, and so if we bring this, this will be the agenda. So everyone should have that, and it's wastewater treatment plant facility assessment. And Rick has, both Arcanus will be there, as Wallace is going to be there. Wallace is going to be there also. So we can see the workings of the wastewater and see our finances the next few years.
Okay. We're still having an executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
With Brian.
Brian Wheeler. Okay, all right. I'm going to go around the table, and then we'll take a short recess, and then we will go into executive session. So Chief Arnold, do you have anything for us?
No.
All right. Mr. Wheeler, anything else?
Welcome to City of Bryan, land of cones and barrels.
Yes.
I don't know if you guys saw the article in the Bryan Times last week. There was two days' worth. Did a pretty good update on the projects, where they stand. I don't know if you drove on West High Street today, but they completed the milling in the outside lanes, weather permitting, Wednesday morning. They're going to start paving the outside lanes, move the traffic on the outside, and start milling the inside. We're on track for having West High Street complete prior to the Jubilee. That's in their contract documents that there is to be no work in the 100 and 200 blocks of West High Street during the Jubilee itself. So it either all has to be done, or they can't start it. So unless we get rain nonstop for the next two weeks, we should be in real good shape.
So you're saying from West Main, or from Main Street West?
Should be done within, will be done within two weeks.
Gotcha.
There might be some striping, some miscellaneous stuff, but it'll be open to all traffic.
Yep.
And then they're going to decide if they're going to start on East High as well. Now, again, as part of their contract documents, all lanes need to be open for the Jubilee Parade and for the night of the fireworks. But that doesn't mean they can't drive on a milled surface, you know. That may be a possibility. It may happen inconsequential if it does, but they're supposed to have all four lanes open that direction. South Main, things are progressing as we thought. You know, you can see the traffic patterns are set up. They've got one north and one southbound lane and a center turn lane, and that's basically going to stay throughout the construction project. Once they get the east side done, which is what we're working on now, they're going to shift the lanes over. So there'll be a minor traffic shift, but it's still going to be three lanes. Then they'll build the west side. And when they get that done, and the curving board and everything else that's there, they'll basically put one surface layer on top, and then they'll just do, basically, maintain traffic, flag them around the equipment as they're paved. You know, there won't be big zones that are set up. It'll be pretty much open to all traffic. So we're on track for both jobs. High Street job should be 100% complete by August 1st, South Main by August 15th.
Now, are we still on target for Main Street for the rest of completion, for a grant to?
We've applied for the grant. We should hear in July, yes or no, if they tell me to wait till next year to apply again. Depends on their funding, the amount of applicants that are there, and the condition of the highway itself.
What we're targeting for is 2015, though, correct?
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen, okay.
Yeah, it'd be sixteen construction.
Well, I made an error. I told somebody fifteen.
Which is why we ended up doing the work we did last Thursday on the underpass. You know, I don't know if any of you saw. We had milled a two-foot strip out of the center lane on North Main Street near the underpass area. The asphalt had pulled apart over the winter at that original construction seam, froze, heaved out, and there was a trench probably six to eight inches wide, some places four to six inches deep. Cold mix just wouldn't stay in there. We couldn't hot mix it because you couldn't get a good bond, so we physically had to mill, put a tack down, repave, and we took out a couple of the worst speed humps that were there as well. But just normal maintenance that really couldn't wait. You know, we didn't have $150,000 to repave it.
Now, if the Ohio grant goes through in 2016, it'll pick up where left from South Main Street and go out far north.
It'll go, we applied to go all the way out north past, well, it's not the hospital, the Villas, Fountain Inn and Villas. Supposed to go on the north edge of the Fountain, yeah, north edge of Fountain Park where the prime city limits start. I think there's a chiropractor's office there. Both sides of the road from there, south, all the way down through to the Walmart entrance where this construction that we're doing right now currently picks up.
Okay. Good.
But it's all ahead. We're going to forge ahead, and we'll try and keep traffic flowing as best we can. Construction's never fun, but we'll get through it, and I think everybody will be happy when it's done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Holmeyer, do you have anything for us? All righty. Mr. Leroy, you have anything for us?
No.
Back to work full-time, or just whenever you want to, right? Chief Siders, you have anything?
No, sir.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Wheeler? All righty. Mr. Hoopie?
I just wanted to thank Rick Beals and company there for all of their hard work on that emergency system and thinking of us and the rest of the county when this came up. Appreciate that.
Mr. Wright?
I want to bring up an article that was in the paper again this week as a congratulatory standpoint on my part as being a councilman. For the last forty-some years, I've known Dick Reed. I've served with committees with him. I've had him as a competitor. I've worked with him on council for the last 15 years. And I'm going to say this. There are many, many projects that we've been involved with, one of them being the sewer treatment plant, where Dick has been instrumental in us saving money and setting it back so the taxpayers and fee payers don't have to pay additional money. And it has been an honor to work with him, and I think it was long overdue for his citizenship. But again, I'm going to go one stage further and congratulate on behalf of me and hopefully the rest of the council for his citizenship of the year. He was well deserved. Well, after that, I really don't have anything. Just thanks.
You done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
Well, the main thing I want to say is I appreciate everyone's, and I'm sure the whole city, appreciate the patience that everyone has had with the color orange out there on the streets. I know it's very irritating at times. I did a little detour today when they were out there grinding away, and I was trying to go home, and I had, so I took another shortcut. You don't have to go too far if you need to avoid that. And just remember, be careful out there. There's a lot of workers out there, and we don't want to hit anybody. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Lori?
No, sir.
All right. Mayor?
I guess you stole my thunder. I would say the same.
That's what I get for being first.
I too wanted to congratulate Nick for that honor, and it's his knowledge on the council with budgets and so forth has really helped the whole city immensely. So I was able to attend that and really enjoyed that. So again, thank you, and reminder of the Jubilee Parade, get your entry in if you're writing in that and so forth. And then I had another at the, as he keep mentioning that. The county is, the Maumee Valley is taking a traffic survey, and you can go online and fill out that survey at Maumee Valley. I think you have a copy of that, or if I can see it here a second. It's a, it's a Maumee, we can give the paper the information to go online and fill this out. And basically, they want to know some questions from the public, and it's a five-county area that's Paulding County, Defiance, Williams, Fulton, and Henry. And it's a rural transportation study that Maumee Valley has been asked to do. And it's such thing, and you rate it on a scale of five, four, three, two, one, and it kind of gives them an idea and the state of Ohio, ODOT, what to plan for transportation-wise in the next few years, more or less like we're doing at the wastewater and things like that, setting goals and so forth. And you don't have to identify yourself, but you can go online and take this survey, maumeevalleyplanning.org. You can go online, or you can, you know, print it out from that and send them in if you want to do it like that.
One of the things that I'm stressing on there is I'd sure love to see four lanes from Bryan out to the turnpike. I still think we need it with all the truck traffic we're